I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. Picard, please stand for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Shumoy, please read the mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide equality education and encourage students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you. And Ron Coughlin, um, that is absent with notice. Angela?
Here.
I'm here. Kyle?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Thank you. We have a form. I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda. My motion to approve the agenda is presented. Do I support? Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I am looking for a motion for the approval of consent agenda. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
The personnel report, we have a resignation by Mr. West. He is a special education teacher at the high school. His last day is this Friday. Moving on to another district as a special ed director. He's also resigning from the JV football coach. We have one termination, as you can see in the backup, for job management and the information provided. We have two new hires. Mary Mattis is the secretary at the high school. She replaces Darlene McNichols, who is the fourth grade teacher. So, Mary, welcome. We also have Deena Robinson, which is our new kindergarten teacher. She will replace Mrs. McCoy, who is moving into the Title I position at Lee Elementary School. So, Ms. Robinson will begin on February 7th.
I just want to say thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to being started, to meeting my students, and just getting to know this community and serving the students here at Richmond. So, thank you again for having me here tonight, and thank you for this opportunity. Thrill.
Thank you.
As I said, Ms. McCoy is the appointment. She's moving to the Title I specialist. I had no corrections on the organizational minutes or the regular minutes from January 10th. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I am looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act and upon the request of the student's parents and guardian, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of conducting a hearing to consider the discipline of a student whose identity is known as Student 012422-8.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go into meeting for closed session. We will be back to finish the rest of the agenda after. And next is the part of our agenda here, our meeting for the presentation. Ms. Pacino, we have the bottom note. Oh, I'm sorry. Our next is our bottom note. Can we get that?
There is, um, the fitness and weight room equipment that the Board authorized in December has been arriving and been installed. Everything should be finalized within the next couple of days. We are awaiting an occupancy before we can allow students to use that facility. I believe this Thursday, we're supposed to have the final inspections for that new facility. On the 17th, we had our PD Day. I did a walkthrough with all construction at the elementary school to finalize the punch list. Most of the items that we had listed, they've already taken care of. There's a lot of, just some minor items, there's nothing major. We'll be scheduling the punch list walkthroughs for the middle school and high school within the next, I think once next weekend, once upon, so that's it.
Thank you. Next, we'll be moving to our presentation of the instructional spotlight on high school grading policy. Castle, um, Mrs. Sarah.
Hi.
On the computer, actually. I don't know. So, if you're, you might be, I guess that's what we need.
Thank you.
So, good evening. Today is going to be a continuation of our K-12 grading policies. We last went into our standards-based grading for our K-8 schools, and today we're going to be talking about specifically these standards-based grading, not standards. We all do standards, but the traditional grading methods at the high school.
So, my goal today is not only cover the high school's grading policy, but then make sure that I answer any questions that you had from the last presentation, which is, it's been a while now. So, I went back and reviewed the video, but hopefully we're getting to any questions that you may have about the grading policies here. First page here, just a pretty basic overview, just a purpose for grading our student work. Why do we grade the work in the high school? Primary purpose is to communicate achievement to the students, what they know how they're doing, to the parents, and as well as the secondary learning institutions that they may elect to go on to in the future. And then we talk about our secondary purposes, which are to provide information that the students can use for their self-evaluation and growth, to encourage student growth and progress in learning. One of the other things that we use grading for is to identify our students for educational opportunities like honors or AP courses in the future, or potentially AP credit as they move on to college. And then finally, to evaluate the effectiveness of our curricular instructional and assessment practices and programs. So, in the high school, we have two different assessment categories. We have the summative and we have the formative here. We use these quite a bit, and our kids know what these mean. The summative, when you hear summative, you should think tasks, quizzes, project-based assessments. The summative are the end of the unit usually, or the end of the process, where we're actually seeing what the children have learned and what they've attained. The formative are the actual learning process. So, this would be considered like the daily work that they're going to be doing in class, the homework, any small checks for understanding along the way that they may have. So, together, the formative and the summative make up the grades in the high school. Most of the time, again, is spent in that formative realm. There's a lot here. Essentially, what it breaks down to is in the high school, we have the 80/20. The way it's stated in the handbook is that we have, the final grade is 80% summative and 20% formative. So, we're looking at 80/20 to make up that 100%. And then there's some verbiage there about the test retakes, about how in the high school students are allowed to retake half of their summative assessments, and the higher the scores are kept in. So, a student doesn't do well on, for example, a world history assessment in the first unit, they're allowed to go back, they're allowed to retake that, and if they got an 18 out of 30 the first time, they go back and they get 20 out of 30 the second time, the 20 out of 30 would replace the original score there. There are some caveats along the way that a student has to jump, and some hoops they have to jump through in order to get there, including, you know, they have to make up all the, all the assignments have to be turned in. So, again, if we're using the example of that world history unit, a student can't not turn in the formatives, take a summative, not do well, and then go back and say, oh, I just want to try this again. There are conditions along the line that they have to have everything turned in in order to meet that requirement. And then the retake window is based on the teacher discretion. Traditionally, we keep it between a week and 10 days there, just because we want, we don't want to wait 10 weeks and they move on to a totally different subject, and now it's time for that, you know, we're expecting a student to do that. So, again, traditionally, a week to 10 days is what we ask the retake window to be. And again, that's more for the students than it is for the teachers, because we don't want them to move on from October, moving into, let's say, January now, trying to take a retake that they took back in the homecoming week. Policy on late work, missing work, and zeros here. The formative assessments, the assignments are accepted up until the time to the summative. So, again, sometimes the unit may be two weeks long, sometimes it may be three weeks long, and it just really depends on the number of standards and the length and the in-depth coverage of that unit. So, work that is completed and turned in is part of the requirement for a summative retake, will be accepted, but not graded. On summative assessments, all assessments must be taken, zeros shall not be given for summatives. I think that's important, too. So, there should not be any summatives in a grade book. So, all students are expected to take those summatives. Those are the knowledge checks that we find out what they did. The only exception is a zero, is if they did not qualify for a retake. So, let's say a student takes it, they do very poorly, and they actually get a zero on it. They didn't turn in their work along the way, they would then have that zero, because they wouldn't be eligible for the retake.
The good thing to take away is that it's based on the actual grade and not based on behavior for a zero for that category.
The other, actually, the other way, too, is after given an opportunity to take a summative at a later date, the student failed to do so. So, we give them the opportunity to make it up, we give them, it's been two, three weeks. I've really, I think everybody experienced this once in my time here, where we just flat up, could not get the student to take it. They actually said, I don't want to take that. I'm not going to get into why, but I'm sure why. The homework, so homework's a hot topic nowadays. So, the purpose of homework is to provide students with an opportunity to practice those skills and concepts that have been taught in class. All homework assignments should meet the following criteria. There's a list of criteria here. There has to be a clear purpose. Homework is not a punishment. This is not a, you haven't behaved yourself today, so I'm going to assign you some homework. No, that's, that's not the purpose of it. It needs to be appropriate to the skill level of the student. So, again, if we're talking about a senior-level English class, we shouldn't be giving them homework where they're coloring in a math graph, or whatever it's going to be. Or vice versa, if you're in a ninth-grade class, the homework assignment shouldn't be AP levels, you know, way beyond the students' knowledge base there. Some of the other things that we're looking for, homework should not be used for new learning at all. So, it shouldn't be, we're going to learn this, here's your homework, and you're going to come in and have a quiz on it tomorrow. That is not the purpose of homework. The purpose of homework is to reinforce those skills for them. Here's a graded scale that was included in there as well. There's been some questions, and there are some variances among different school districts as to what's considered A's, B's. We have what I would consider a traditional grading scale there. You're looking at the A, A-, and B+ are considered exceptionally fine work. The Bs, B-, and C+ are better than average work. The Cs, C-, and D+ are considered average work. Sure wasn't my household. I'm not coming home with a D+, not on purpose. And then definitely the D and D- are what we consider poor work. And then along the bright side there, you can see that there's a great point attached to that for high school, because one of the things that the high school students get the second they get here, and our freshmen will be getting them here in less than a week, is they will establish a GPA that they use to move on through their high school, kind of their standing, and then when they're applying to colleges. So, some of the questions that I saw that you had for the standard-based, we're trying to answer here in these next couple of slides. So, incoming freshmen are notified as transitioned from standard-based grading to Richmond, to our high school traditional grading system during our eighth-grade visit transition. Traditionally, when they come over in March, I believe it is, early March, they come over. That's one of the things that we cover with our counselor and then myself as well, in the spring of our eighth-grade year. And then we also cover it again in the freshman flu level days at the very beginning. It's one of the slides that we talk about is our grading policy here. In discussions with Ms. Sarah here and some of our high school teachers as well, Ms. Horowitz, we do recognize the fact that I think we need to be a little bit more clear with our eighth graders coming over. I think that there is some confusion, especially in those first couple of weeks in that first marking period, with our eighth graders coming over. So, one of the things that we plan on having is a parent school, a parent high school orientation, because we think it's important that parents have a very clear understanding of the grading policy and the expectations as they come over, not just their students. So, one of the things that we're going to put in place for next year is actually having a parent orientation and kind of run them, the parents run them through the day, the expectations and the different changes, and what it means to receive the different grades in high school. One of the things we also need to do is review the Richmond High School grading system in our math classes during the first few weeks. So, we'll take our math courses, have our math teachers explain the grading system, the 80/20, and what it means, kind of run through some different scenarios as to, well, in this scenario, if you did really well on all your formatives, but you didn't do very well on your summatives, this is where you would be, or vice versa, just kind of run through some scenarios with the students. Because I think what we're finding out is a lot of them don't really understand the actual true weight, the 80/20, coming into the standard space. And the final question we had is, do we examine, examine the idea of transitioning to traditional grading for the second semester of eighth grade? That was just my idea.
We would also like to look across our different courses to make sure that everybody is equally doing summatives, formatives, at least departments are similar in that way, because it's not quite fair. It's like, there's two summatives, you one retake, you know what I mean, and then the teacher next door is offering more than that. So, we just need to tighten up our departments, making sure that everything is correct in that way.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that we've really noticed is, we've kind of spent some time looking at the different grade books and creeping into the different teachers' grade books. And we saw that in the first quarter, some teachers had four summatives, some teachers had two summatives, some had seven summatives. So, we're really going to have that discussion before, having either a bare minimum or having an expectation of we have maximum or summatives versus formatives, just to make sure that's very applicable across the board in our different classes. Up on the board and in front of you, can help me, just kind of some different screens comparing the eighth grade to the ninth grade. So, one of the things that we use all the time every day in the high school is a quick look up. So, we look up and we want to check out how a student is doing right now. So, this is a screenshot of a ninth grader that we have in the high school here. And when I look at, you can see the student, I actually can see a grade, I can see a percentage for them. We would do the same thing for an eighth grade. I use Mr. Bartel's login, got into an eighth grade. Again, this is a sample look at an eighth-grade student here. So, you can see the difference between the two of them. How do I go back?
There, right here.
Okay. So, you can see there that when you do a quick look up of an eighth grader, you can't see anything, because the standards, they don't have an updated current grade for them. Again, here is an eighth grade. So, again, that's an eighth-grade sheet. So, when you look at an eighth grader, this is a ninth grader, I apologize. So, I'm looking at the ninth grader's chemistry class. You can see, these are all the grades that made up this ninth grader's second quarter view. So, you can see, there's 10 out of 10, 35 out of 35, 15 out of 15, all the way up. So, you can see a current running total of how that ninth grader's doing in the course. This is the same view for an eighth grade. Looks very different. You don't see a current running total of how that eighth grader is doing along the way. The only exception is if I go over here and I click on these little blue icons, it will tell me how that student did on that standard, with an NP, AP, a PP, or an AP on there, but you don't have a running total, and it's not as easy to pull up and see. It's very clear and transparent. When you click on a high school student's grade, I can pull it up right now, and I can tell you that this student is getting a 97%. In the chemistry class, I can tell you this is why they're getting the 97%, because here is their grade, it's very clear, very simple. Not as clear to see for our students coming over for the eighth grade. So, I think that may be where the summative confusion is, just making sure that we have transparency, which is what I'm going to show you here. Again, this is a historical look. So, one of the things that we do in the high school is we take a look back, how did our freshmen do as eighth graders? So, again, I pulled a sample eighth grader, just randomly, took a look at it. I can see how they did in algebra, and I can see how they did in basic design, because those were high school credits. So, I can see their high school grade. I have no idea how they did in computer programming, language arts, science, or social studies, because there's nothing there for them to look at. There is a way for me to get to that, and I'm going to show you that in a second, is way, way more involved and much, much more complicated for us to do that. So, this is what a current eighth graders look like right now, historical standard-based grade. So, this is eighth grade language arts. We had to use these, so when I show you the examples in a second, we had to go in and we had to pick students, we had to go back into individual classes, click on a standard, and then pull up on how they did in all of the substandards. So, again, much more complicated to get this data. All of that leads us to this. Some of the questions that I thought, the way I interpreted it, is there was questions as to how our eighth graders are transitioning over to the high school. So, how are our students doing that got proficiency, advanced proficiency, whatever it may be, how are they transitioning over to the high school? So, what I did is, again, I picked 15, I believe there's 15, 16 random students here. Again, I clicked on one, and then I clicked on every seventh one until I got the total list here. And I pulled their math, their ELA, their science, and their social studies in eighth and ninth grade, just to get an idea of how they're doing from eighth grade compared to ninth grade. So, you can see, you know, Ms. Sarah and I took a lot of time to segregate this information. And the conclusion that we've come to is there is a correlation between how the student did in eighth grade and then how they're transitioning. What this is, is this is first semester eighth grade versus what was current for their first semester average when I pulled this about three weeks ago. So, the grades aren't in until the beginning of next week. So, these are not final grades, and this is not absolutely concrete, but this is the best idea, the best snapshot that I was able to give the Board at this time. So, like you can see, for example, the student on the top was a proficient student, and again, there were 17, 18, 19 different proficiencies. So, when you see PP/B, that student had partially proficient and proficient. So, again, the students are rarely ever just proficient all the way, or advanced proficient all the way, just like in high school, they're rarely ever all these, all these. So, that student that was proficient in eighth-grade math, then went on to ninth-grade math and carries an A grade, that's what we checked him. That student, same student, was partially proficient or proficient in ELA8, and is carrying a B in ELA9. Proficient, partially proficient and proficient in eighth grade, and a C+ in science for ninth grade, and then a proficient for social studies, A, and an A for social studies, no. And I'm not going to go through every one of those, because that would take forever, but you've got the opportunity to kind of check those out. But what we did see is there is a correlation between students struggling in eighth grade and students that are continuing to struggle in ninth grade, and students that were successful and students that are successful in ninth grade. There are, of course, outliers. We didn't, I'm not going to state that it's 100%. We saw students that had great success in eighth grade and are struggling first semester in high school. We also saw students that had the opposite, that, you know, may not have found their groove in eighth grade, and they got into ninth grade, and they're just loving with a passion that they're in the big school now, they've got teachers that they're getting along with very good, they're just doing tremendous. So, we are finding, and you know, there's all sorts of variables that may lead to a high school's grade. The next one is the same thing. So, I wanted to dig deeper. So, we did the same thing, and we went from eighth grade to ninth grade to now 10th grade. So, we've got three years worth of data here, because we wanted to make sure, you know, could have had just this class, was it just the eighth graders to ninth graders? So, we did the same thing, following eighth to ninth to 10th, and we found the same gender trends. Our students that did well in eighth grade continue to do well for the most part. You will see some there that had, for eighth-grade math, that have high school credit, that we were unable to pull proficiencies, because they got high school grades for those.
So, all in all, you can see that there's a strong correlation, and one of the things that we're going to work on is transitioning the students from eighth grade to ninth grade, informing their families, and being able to look more deeply at those grade books and those expectations for department.
We did do one more. We went, we went super deep on this one. So, the third one is pulling the exact same information for students that are currently on the graders. So, we have their 11th grade, 10th grade, 9th grade, and 8th grade, because that was one of the first groups that really got into the standard-based grading. So, again, we didn't pull up every student that on this, we just pulled random students, trying to get a snapshot of them. So, the trend did seem to carry over from year to year to year. So, at this point, we're open to any questions, and we're going to try to make sure that we can answer anything that you may have for us.
I have a question. This is for Reni Park. What is your feeling on the middle school grading system?
The middle school grading?
Your personal feeling.
I am all for standard-based learning. I think that's a very strong, that's what we teach, that is the what behind what we teach, and then the standard space. And I think that to kind of accumulate grades with chunks and pieces to create a raw percentage, I don't think is a true accurate representation, other than directly, did the student master the standard, is or not, and then going through. So, I'm in wait for it.
Any else with any questions?
So, do I understand that we're going to, we haven't done anything before about transitioning and helping parents and students, so we're going to start doing it now?
Yes, and what's so, well, what's so interesting about that is that in most of the districts, you know, we don't have standard space all the way through. It's so exciting, but at the same time, this is really an eye-opening realization that, oh my gosh, we have to create an orientation to actually show them what traditional grading looks like, the system that we all kind of grew up with. So, it's going to be embedded into the ninth-grade orientation, as well as a family night to educate families if they choose to come.
Then, and I, Mr. Castle, I don't know if you can answer.
Sure.
I doubt that you can, because it's eighth grade. But if I'm a parent and I'm looking at that eighth-grade high school student, yeah, I got the quick look up, I get everything, but I can't get, so how am I, how am I knowing if I can't quickly look at how my eighth-grade student is doing? I don't know if, you know, and maybe you can't answer that, because it's eighth grade, but you know what I'm saying?
I think you can. If you go to, I'm sorry, if you go to, and I don't have the power school login for a parent, I think it looks different. It definitely looks different for us. But from my point of view, if I really wanted to know how the student was going, I can click on these little blue icons.
As a parent?
Yes, okay. Sorry, my eyes are so bad. Like, I can click and see how they did on the recap structure of government, if I click on that, that would tell me what their proficiency was on that.
Okay, so basically, because all I know is, working in high school for so many years, I know what the quick look up, I know what that looks like.
Right.
So, the reality is, as a parent, when you're saying you're delving in, you just click on that, it may not, it may look funky here, but if I click some buttons, I get a better idea of what my kids do.
Every single standard that was addressed in, that will have an attached proficiency level?
It's just, and I can speak, and I was a parent of a rich student last year. This was an Iowa, but for me, it was confusing. When I got that first, it, but it was only confusing to me, because I've spent my entire educational career with a traditional standard grading system. So, when I first pulled up, I had no idea how to check those grades until I actually opened it up and saw it, and then I was like, okay, I get this, now it makes sense. But for the uninitiated, I can definitely see how it could be a bit naughty for them. But once you, once you got it, it's pretty clear.
And then, when we're talking about, we're going to do this transition for parents and that, so when we're looking eighth graders, when they're going to schedule and we're getting them ready to go over, you've got those that are, when you were showing the partial, yeah, the partially proficient and maybe their grades, what are, what are we doing, what are we looking at for the classes that they're going to take in ninth grade, and what are we looking at as that stuff doesn't get any better? What, what kind of help are we doing, if I'm asking the question correctly?
I think I understand.
You know what I'm saying? If I'm moving along and I'm still not really doing better, what, what are we doing to help that at the high school level? So that, you know, because you're talking grade points and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So, what are we doing if we stay average or below average?
I think that's really showing the importance of the power of formative assessments. The sooner that a teacher can identify that a student is not getting a concept, the quicker that there is time for, for interventions, small group instruction, differentiated scaffolding techniques within the classroom, to be able to help address that student, as well as the opportunity to retake and to stay after and things like that, that I know that high school teachers do daily.
Okay. And I also think it's important to continue to make sure that we know our students, because when I was pulling this, one of the things that, you know, we saw was the student was advanced proficiency, A the freshman year, A second semester the freshman year, and all of a sudden, I see Cs and Ds. And then I, something clicked, I know the student went through a personal tragedy, and so, and then I see that they're back up on the upswing now. So, making sure that we know our students, and that's one of the things that we really pride ourselves here, is if there's something going on at home, if there's something going on in their personal lives, if there's something going on academically, that they're just struggling with it, that we make sure that we're putting those supports in place, you know, those social, emotional, and academic to support them.
I think, one of the things that we did was scheduling at the high school, maybe your second year, is we've tried when we offer like Algebra I, we tried to the best of our ability to have two teachers available to be teaching Algebra I. So, if there is a personality conflict, which we're humans, that does happen. We have another option for kids. It's not, we're not 100% because of the size. But what we found, and it was brought up, is we got to make sure that in those Algebra I classes, that both teachers are doing the same number of summative assessments, so that each child in each class has the same options and opportunities. Because as Mr. Castle said, I'm a teacher A, and I do eight summative assessments, well, I can have retakes of 50%, or four of them. But if I'm teacher B, and I only do two, I only get one opportunity for those kids to retake that. So, there's some inconsistencies that we have to address collectively, and it was a, for us, it was an eye-opener, doing the schedule like that. So, you know, that's one of our, that's one of our goals. The other thing, as Mr. Castle said, is our, we all as parents know the traditional system.
First semester being grade versus what was current for the first semester average when I pulled this about three weeks ago. So the grades aren't in until the beginning of next week, so these are not final grades and this is not absolutely concrete, but this is the best idea, the best snapshot that I was able to give the board at this time. So like you can see, for example, the student on the top was a proficient student. And again, there were seventeen, eighteen, nineteen different proficiencies. So when you see P P slash B, that student had partially proficient and proficient. So again, the students are rarely ever just proficient all the way or advanced proficient all the way. Just like in high school, they're rarely ever all A's, all B's. So that student that was proficient in eighth grade math, then went on to ninth grade math and carries an A grade. That would be checked. That student, same student was partially proficient or proficient in E L A eight and is carrying a B in E L A nine. Proficient, partially proficient and proficient in eighth grade and a C plus in science for ninth grade. And then a proficient for social studies eight and an A for social studies nine. And I'm not going to go through every one of those because that would take forever, but you've got the opportunity to kind of check those out. But what we did see is there is a correlation between students struggling in eighth grade and students that are continuing to struggle in ninth grade and students that were successful and students that are successful in ninth grade. There are, of course, outliers. We didn't even, I'm not going to state that it's 100%. We saw students that had great success in eighth grade and are struggling first semester in high school. We also saw students that had the opposite. That, you know, may not have found their groove in eighth grade and they got into ninth grade and they're just loving with a passion that they're in the big school now, they've got teachers that they're getting along with very good, they're just doing tremendous. So we are finding, and you know, there's all sorts of variables that may lead to a high school in grade. The next one is the same thing, so I wanted to dig deeper. So we did the same thing and we went from eighth grade to ninth grade to now tenth grade. So we've got three years worth of data here because we wanted to make sure, you know, could have had just this class. Was it just the eighth graders to ninth graders? So we did the same thing following eighth to ninth to tenth and we found the same gender trends. Our students that did well in eighth grade continue to do well for the most part. You will see some there that had, for eighth grade math, had high school credit. That we were unable to pull proficiencies because they got high school grades for those.
So all in all, you can see that there's a strong correlation. And one of the things that we are going to work on is transitioning the students from eighth grade to ninth grade and informing their families and being able to look more deeply at those grade books and those expectations for department.
We did do one more. We went super deep on this one. So the third one is pulling the exact same information for students that are currently in eleventh graders. So we have their eleventh grade, tenth grade, ninth grade and eighth grade. Because that was one of the first groups that really got into the standard-based grading. So again, we didn't pull up every student that on this. We just pulled random students, trying to get a snapshot of them. So the trend did seem to carry over from year to year to year. So at this point, we're open to any questions and we're going to try to make sure that we can answer anything that you may have for us.
I have a question. This is for Reni Park. What is your feeling on the middle school grading system?
The middle school grading?
Your personal feeling.
I am all for standard-based learning. I think that's a very strong, that's what we teach. That is the what behind what we teach and then the standard space. And I think that to kind of accumulate grades with chunks and pieces to create a world percentage, I don't think is a true accurate representation other than directly did the student master the standard, is there not? And then going through. So I'm in wait for it.
Thank you. Any else with any questions?
So do I understand that we're going to, we haven't done anything before about transitioning and helping parents and students? So we're going to start doing it now?
Yes, and what's so, well, what's so interesting about that is that in most districts, you know, we don't have standard space all the way through. It's so exciting, but at the same time, this is really an eye-opening realization that, oh my gosh, we have to create an orientation to actually show them what traditional grading looks like, the system that we all kind of grew up with. So it's going to be embedded into the ninth grade orientation as well as a family night to educate families if they choose to come.
Then, and I, Mr. Castle, I don't know if you can answer.
Sure.
I doubt that you can because it's eighth grade. But if I'm a parent and I'm looking at that eighth grade, high school student, yeah, I got the quick look up. I get everything, but I can't get, so how am I, how am I knowing if I can't quickly look at how my eighth grade student is doing? I don't know if I, you know, and maybe you can't answer that because it's eighth grade, but you know what I'm saying?
I think you can. If you go to, sorry, if you go to, and I don't have the power school login for a parent. I think it looks different. It definitely looks different for us. But from my point of view, if I really wanted to know how the student was going, I can click on these little blue icons.
As a parent, yes, okay.
And, sorry, my eyes are so bad. Like I can click and see how they did on recap structure of government. If I click on that, that would tell me what their proficiency was on that.
Okay, so basically, because all I know is, working in high school for so many years, I know what the quick look up, I know what that looks like. So the reality is, as a parent, when you're saying you're delving in, you just click on that. It may not, it may look funky here, but if I click some buttons, I get a better idea of what my kids do.
Every single standard that was addressed in that will have an attached proficiency level?
It's just, and I can speak, and I was a parent of a rich student last year. This was an eye opener for me, it was confusing. When I got that first, it, but it was only confusing to me because I've spent my entire educational career with a traditional standard grading system. So when I first pulled up, I had no idea how to check those grades until I actually opened it up and saw it. And then I was like, okay, I get this, now it makes sense. But for the uninitiated, I can definitely see how it could be a bit daunting for them. But once you, once you got it, it's pretty clear.
And then when we're talking about, we're going to do this transition for parents and that. So when we're looking eighth graders, when they're going to schedule and we're getting them ready to go over, you've got those that are, when you were showing the partially proficient and maybe their grades, what are, what are we doing, what are we looking at for the classes that they're going to take in ninth grade? And what are we looking at as that stuff doesn't get any better? What, what kind of help are we doing, if I'm asking the question correctly? If I?
I think I understand.
You know what I'm saying? If I'm moving along and I'm still not really doing better, what, what are we doing to help that at the high school level? So that, you know, because you're talking grade points and all that kind of stuff. So what are we doing if we stay average or below average?
I think that's really showing the importance of the power of formative assessments. The sooner that a teacher can identify that a student is not getting a concept, the quicker that there is time for interventions, small group instruction, differentiated scaffolding techniques within the classroom to be able to help address that student as well as the opportunity to retake and to stay after and things like that that I know that high school teachers do daily.
And I also think it's important to continue to make sure that we know our students. Because when I was pulling this, one of the things that, you know, we saw was the student was advanced proficiency, A the freshman year, A second semester the freshman year, and all of a sudden I see Cs and Ds. And then I, something clicked, I know the student went through a personal tragedy. And so, and then I see that they're back up on the upswing now. So making sure that we know our students, and that's one of the things that we really pride ourselves here is, if there's something going on at home, if there's something going on in their personal lives, if there's something going on academically that they're just struggling with it, that we make sure that we're putting those supports in place, you know, both social, emotional and academic to support them.
I think, can I follow up on the question? One of the things that we did was scheduling at the high school, maybe your second year is, we've tried when we offer like Algebra One, we tried to the best of our ability to have two teachers available to be teaching Algebra One. So if there is a personality conflict, which we're humans, that does happen. We have another option for kids. It's not, we're not 100% because of the size. But what we found and it was brought up is we got to make sure that in those Algebra One classes, that both teachers are doing the same number of summative assessments so that each child in each class has the same options and opportunities. Because as Mr. Castle said, I'm a teacher A and I do eight summative assessments. Well, I can have retakes of 50%, or four of them. But if I'm teacher B and I only do two, I only get one opportunity for those kids to retake that. So there's some inconsistencies that we have to address collectively. And it was, for us, it was an eye opener doing the schedule like that. So, you know, that's one of our, that's one of our goals. The other thing, as Mr. Castle said, is our, we all as parents know the traditional system. We all grew up with it. But the eye opener for us was, our kids don't. They've only grown up, grown up in our district through the summative. So now we come to high school and we assume they know eighty, twenty, what averages. They probably don't, some don't. And so that was our, that's our piece that we have to do. So whoever asked the question, thank you for putting us through this episode because it gave us an eye opener. We need, here's some things that we need to work on.
It was certainly an eye opener for me. I assumed that they knew how, exactly what this was because.
It's a traditional assessment?
Yeah, like everyone here, that's all we knew. So, you know, I'm glad this discussion's happening, it's very good for us.
Okay, and then it might, is it too much to assume that it can be corrected right away? The fact that some teachers have this many assessments and some don't, I find that bad.
I think the part of our looking at all of this is realizing how many formatives there need to be personally. I mean, formatives should be the most on that report card sheet because that's really where you're finding the actual process of learning. And that's what we're here to celebrate is students, you know, learning. That's, the quicker you can diagnose if something's wrong, put them in groups and do all of that good teaching that you know happens when you're able to differentiate. So I agree, that is something that what we need to do is put in place is making sure that there's more formatives, there's more pauses to look to see if students are getting it. But not just that, asking the question that is most important, which is, well, now what? These students are getting it, these ones aren't, these ones really don't. Now what? Now what am I going to do to change my instructions so that everybody can win?
Right, because that's the first one is we've been doing this. I'm shocked that that's how the system works. I'm shocked.
But you've got to remember though, in some of the schedules, we had some teachers who, they were the only person in that grade. So there wasn't an inconsistency in an Algebra One, if you say, or in English twelve, because there was only one teacher.
Except I would disagree with that. There is an inconsistency because that's what we said. It's, if we've been, we've had this system for what? So it's either everybody's doing it the same way or they're not.
I don't, I don't, you guys feel differently speaking, I don't think we can make it across the board assumptions that every teacher in the high school is going to have, I'm just making this number up, ten formative assessments and three summatives. Because each course is different. A history course, it may be, might be weekly.
So you're saying that the only way that makes it equitable is that two people teach the same thing?
No, I think we need to establish that, what is the minimum that we need to take that summative, that end of the year, create the minimum? And then based on the course, it may be more of those because there may be courses that have more mini units than other courses.
I think it's the curriculum, the programs that we use and definitely the departments. You know, some departments like math, you know, are going to maybe have more formatives and more formative opportunities than perhaps in the E L A class. That their meat potatoes of their day is actually the reading and the internal, you know, processing. So I think it would just depend on those departments and looking at our curriculum and our program usage to come up with a, you know, we don't want to have a cookie cutter teacher type of thing, but we want to be able to make sure that it's still equitable.
Okay. My last question, when you were talking about your, the grading policy and the eighty for eighty, twenty and all of that. So then I would assume that all, all of our teachers follow, they can't make their own grading policy opposite of what you just represented to us in their classes?
The only class that has that leeway are our AP courses because they're dictated by the college board curriculum.
AP courses?
That's right.
So otherwise, everybody else should be doing how you just said it's going.
If they, if they do do different, they can put it on their syllabus by the policy, but it's got to be pre-approved before it's.
Pre-approved by who?
It would be in the building law.
Not by the Board of Education because it deviates from the grading?
There is, there is in the policy, that, I think it's in the handbook that references that if a student, if a teacher has a more challenging, it can't, it's got to be pre-approved. It can't be just unilaterally. And I don't know if we've ever pre-approved.
I have not.
So they should be all.
You've never approved anybody to do that?
I have not approved any deviations.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Like I said, you don't have to do it for instance, I know it's AP.
Well, that's a whole different.
That's a whole different.
High school.
Okay, okay.
Anybody else have any more questions?
I have a question, this may be off topic of what we were just talking about. But the eighty, twenty, is that, is that district-wide decided or is that more Department of Education? The eighty, twenty?
District, district. It was the district.
That was put in four, the spring of four, May of fourteen, I think you guys approved that. Because I think that was the meeting that was that, you guys were approving that.
Can you mess, like, can you do seventy, thirty, if you want, or ninety?
The right, the way, the way it's, the verbiage right now says, it has to be at least eighty, twenty. If the final grade for semester class is determined by at least eighty percent summative and at most 20% formative.
No, I think she's asking, we could have, we could have decided that it was seventy, seventy.
I'm sorry, no, I'm saying, the way it's written right now.
Yeah, as a board, we could have set a lot of time to it.
It's like the terms when you were in school, when you.
When it started.
And the good thing with them was 20% is not a lot, so we're not going to do our homework, turn it in because we're not going to get a lot of credit for it. Are you still finding that's happening or kids come to terms with that?
Less so because they, they know they have to have it in in order to take the retake.
So the evolution of the policy initially, I think what you just said, we were finding. So the evolution of the policy is what Mr. Castle said, we tweaked that more so you had to have it in in order to be able to retake. To put weight on that.
Because I mean, creating that, the, not the summative, the other one, is, is where all the work is getting done and all the grading, that it's only worth 20%, you know, so that's, that's a lot.
In a very basic way, you want kids to demonstrate in front of the teacher, whether it's a test or a presentation, that you're summing. When you look at homework, at the form, that sometimes you don't know who's doing that homework. Whether it's kids at home sitting together, so, you know, and that's why the weighting is a little different. In a very basic understanding of policy.
Yeah, and we have those discussions with students because we will see a student that'll have straight A's for all their formatives and then it comes to the summative and they fail. So the discussions I have is, did you truly understand that or whose work is this?
Thank you. I want to thank you, anybody else have any questions?
I'd like to thank you for doing all that research.
Absolutely.
Really put my mind at ease to see that we're trending the same through the grading, different standards. I would like to maybe ask you, I don't know if you'd be interested, I mean, just pulling some of the students, maybe the ninth graders or some that still remember the standard-based grading, to see if they have a preference. If there is, if it's easier for them to look at the traditional or keep up on top of their homework through the traditional or anything, it may, maybe I've heard some that feel that have now going to the traditional, it's easier for them to stay on top of their homework. So I was just curious.
Can we just send the student survey after the freshman class, just kind of get their feelings from the projects? Pretty good.
All right, great, thank you so much. Next we move to our next presentation, instructional spotlight for teacher cadet in computer science and automotive technicians and technical programs. This is Ara.
Thank you. All right, so we are in the beginning stages of looking at exploring some new CTE options for our high school. We actually had a meeting today over at Dick Vars and we are beginning our partnership with them to be able to open up automotive technician. And we've already, we had a meeting today, an advisory committee. We've already gotten our scope and sequences and our instructional design plan, the syllabus looked at. Everything is looking really great. We're very excited for our partnership for someone local and to be able to just help our students in, in something that they're super passionate about. The next one is the teacher cadet program. We have had two meetings right now, we've had two meetings for the teacher advisory committee here with representation from teachers here from elementary, from middle school, from high school, post-secondary, special education, administrators, parents, to talk about this program and just what a passion project, of course, for all of us because we're all educators. So what better way to pay the profession forward than to cultivate new teachers for our students? And the last one is computer science, really kind of looking at extending our STEAM, emphasizing a STEAM plus C, which is the computer science, thinking about the information technology pathway at CTE and specifically kind of zoning in on computer programming. We have several computer programming courses at our middle school that would be wonderful to be able to extend and offer a credential in Java or C++ for our high school students and talking about master coding, gaming and computer programming and design. And currently that is our exploration of new classes right now. The applications are due to the state mid-February, so I am looking along at those and more to come for that.
So in the big picture, on February fourteenth, we're going to leave with our next board meeting. We'll be bringing the course catalog. Our recommendation is to add these courses to the course catalog. And obviously it would stay pending state approval because it goes through an approval process. What Ms. Ara talked about, these committees and the, these are all the hoops we have to jump through for a CTE course for the state. She's done a remarkable job. And I've been on two of the three meetings with the Hoovars team. They are extremely excited about this opportunity. With all of our CTE programs, ultimately the end goal is, kids who thrive in that program, they have somewhere they can go when they graduate high school. And this is a huge opportunity for our kids to make very decent money when they leave high school if, if a post-high schools, college or university not in their, in their plans. Obviously, teacher cadet, I am, I'm an advocate for and I will always be. There will be a teacher shortage. The numbers leaving colleges are half of what they used to be. And so, as we all know, it's harder and harder to find qualified candidates. And obviously, the computer programming with the coding and so forth, that is the future with all, everything going digital with technology for companies and industries. So our plan is to bring it to you for approval then on the 28th of February. Then we start scheduling. The high school and Sarah did a survey, these were.
Mr. Castle did a survey. And one of the best things about all of this is that through the survey that Mr. Castle did, these are our top picks for kids. So these, the second highest, teacher cadet. Yep, I want to do that. And I'm, so it's all student-driven of what our high schoolers asked to have.
So how many students could each one of these, or is it just dependent on how many are interested in doing it?
Well, it really, that's part of the things that's being discussed at the advisory. So I think that part of the discussion today at Hoovars is, what is reasonable within a first year? Looking at what they're going to have to do, so. And of course, a lot of our heavy equipment, AIS, has a reduced number for enrollment. So fifteen, eighteen is right where AIS is, so we would mirror that. Teacher cadet, the first year would be a lot of focus on pedagogy and those kind of things about the art of teaching. And then year two would be more of the experiential where they would get that kind of experience. So we would have higher class size in year one, knowing that we might have some kids say, this is not for me, and that's okay. And then computer science would be typically just a regular CTE class number, because that would just be a singleton.
Safety, kids also, also like that. At Hoovars, the facility to be able to manage, make sure your kids are safe. But that's the exciting part. These were, these were student surveys. This is what our kids want. This is the areas that they're looking at. So we're trying to accommodate and build this, build this program to increase our CTE offering. This will also, these courses, if we get them approved by the state, which I believe, I believe that we will, will bring some of our kids back from Pankow. And they'll be have taken here, so that FTE stays here in our district.
So is this, the computer science, the coding and, is that through high school? Are you talking high school level two as well as middle school? So we would, we would be a K-12?
We would be a K-12 STEAM plus C. I wanted to add the STEAM plus computer science, which right now, currently, we have that computer science component in the new STEAM curriculum. We have a computer science program that is comboed out with different levels of programming, web design, all of those courses. And now we could finally say, yes, eighth graders, there is a class for you to take. Let me show you what it is and that you can take at the high school level to integrate it K-12.
Okay, I've been so excited.
I know, me too.
Now, does, does it also lead to, at the high school level, and maybe it's on this, but, you know, there are schools that their, their robotics program is a, is a class, you know, there's something that happens. Is it, are we looking that?
It is considered a different pathway in CTs, called mechatronics is the exact pathway. This is more the informational technology pathway. But what a lot of people don't know is that there's tons of computer coding that goes involved in robotics. And I know you know, there's tons of computer codes that goes into that. And same thing, you integrate that cybersecurity too, about all that coding and those kind of safety measures too, so. But eventually, it's a separate CTE category, I have to go through this process again to get that exact SIP code approved. But this is definitely, we already have the families, we already have a program at our, at our middle school level that is so strong. I mean, that's why all those kids, I mean, every class is packed. So to be able to continue that for them that's really interested, I mean, that'd be fabulous.
It sure will.
Under our current, I'm sorry, under our current sixth period day and our cert, our defined enrollment, if we can increase it, helps them. But this could lead to other courses potentially not running because there's not an interest in them anymore. All right, so, so now, unless we change and begin looking at, and we've had, I would say preliminary conversation, very preliminary, about looking at a different model that other districts, if, you know, those who went to the county school board when it was at the ISD and Romeo presented, they shared a model that they use in their day that allows more courses for kids, but less courses in a given day. Now, they do a block schedule style. So we're having, we are starting those conversations to see what can and can't we do. It all has to be negotiated though.
Yep, and it's just having a different mindset.
And the idea is, I said it from the beginning, I know Deb has said it. I believe every kid needs to be in a CTE program. Even your AP kids need to experience some type of C. The more we can build in getting them seeing the connection, the better our students will, the opportunities they'll have available. I truly believe that.
I had a question about the teacher cadet. Is it specific to a certain, is, you know, early elementary or high school or all of it, like you said?
That was part of our advisory committee. We, so, you know, with the new CTE, some certain classes have been carried over from segments to competencies. And one of the very first classes, of course, that have transferred over is education. So one of the requirements is you have to offer a credential. So we did have the choice to offer an early childhood, which is a CBA credential or the youth credential, which is the YDA credential, that would allow students to do a K-12. So what we're thinking of is obviously allowing student voice and choice into this. What level are you thinking of, but still give them required hours to check out? Maybe you do like high school. You know, you just haven't had the experience and to really have them do an exploration of all of them. But we are going with the K-12 route.
Yeah, that's awesome.
The committee recommended that route.
Yes.
When you get, when you see the final, it requires more hours on the student part and what they have to experience. But in the bigger scheme, they felt that was the better avenue.
Sure, that makes sense.
So it doesn't say that this isn't the first opening to eventually, I mean, if this course takes off, we could offer an early childhood course in the future.
Yeah, no, I was really hoping you were going to say it was more like the K-12, just because it gives you more of a life.
And we actually have student, you know, representation too. And I think that at the beginning too, and at the beginning, you know, they're like, I don't know what I'm doing here. And at the end, one girl was like, I want to take this class. So it was just really neat to, you know, see the evolution of this.
Can one of our current teachers teach it or?
Yes, what, you know, so currently we use, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a blank on the actual name right now. We do a special certification credential for them, for teachers, for example, to AIS, our culinary. You know, there are special credentials to be able to teach.
ACH.
ACH, thank you very much. So we can, so if they're not, for example, certified in that subject to teach high school, we can apply for that, for that credential for them to be able to do so. Because it's considered a CTE class, so anybody could.
And part of that credential is your experience.
That's right.
So as long as you've got the experience, then we can apply. It's an annual that we have to do.
I'm pretty sure that any one of our teachers have logged 400 hours in the last 10 years. I'm pretty sure, so.
So our students would do our own school, like they would teach in Richmond, they would go to.
They would go to, correct, they would do their observations for year one. When they get into their experience, they'd be actually, we'd be seeking out teachers who are looking for these students. And it would be our Richmond classes.
Are we accepting children from other districts or is this just for our kids?
This would be anybody that is, well, if they're a school choice, they automatically get to choose. We could put it out there for other districts like Armada and New Haven that we're currently, that we could gather and potentially get, gather enrollment from them. that we could gather and potentially get and gather enrollment from them. We typically try to make sure our kids have slots first. But with the automotive, you know, one of the conversations we had today was, was our concern, are we going to pull from AIS some kids who may want to move in this and not the AIS? Would that affect that one? But what would you say, we have a limited limit of 10 to Arvita. And they always want to send more than what we allow them because we put our kids in first. So we may gain potentially more kids from another district if our kids want to move into this type of program.
So we just have to open more slots for them and ensure that we're feeding both programs.
It's exciting.
As the teacher cadet, you say they do a start in 11th grade. It's two-year program?
It is. I think, they, yes, it is a two-year program. The first year is going to be one hour, the second is going to be, you know, two hours.
Does it help you after high school?
Oh yes, they walk away with a credential. One of the new things about the new CTE programs is that they have to have, we have to offer a credential, whether they, whether they pass the exam, you know, that's not mandatory, but that we've offered it. So we are going to offer that YDA exam that they have to be able to take. I believe they have to log, they have to take a test and they have to be able to pass with 80% and then an evaluation is scheduled for them to pass those components of an actual lesson.
I think that certification to pass it could be immediately program directors in childcare facilities or youth camps and so forth. That puts you at that level automatically.
Yes.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mrs. Ara. That's amazing. Wonderful, you so much. I think that the high demand for our teacher cadet programs has a lot of my, I wonder if our teachers are in our district. It's because I'm sure many of our students are heading towards it because of that. So thank you.
All right, up next we have our presentation on the FY 2022 athletic budget overview. Mr. Reiner?
Is that on that screen, Chris? Or is that on for me?
Oh, that's for you.
Yeah, on that screen.
Yes.
Renee? Can you get her a note to switch it back to that screen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Which screen do you want?
This computer.
I want this.
So Mr. Reiner is getting ready. What, I asked him, because there was some conversation as we get ready to enter the budget season on athletics. And so there were some questions that were asked about our athletics, where the dollars go and trying to prepare for that next, that conversation. So I asked him, here's where our athletics funds go, starting with it, and then we can go from there in terms of any questions or if we need to drill down even further or if we want to change the direction as we prepare for the budget season for FY 23.
Good evening. With the help of Mrs. Shad, I was able to build this slideshow. So I want to start with my own salary, the director of athletics facilities and safety. You're going to see there's going to be the three check marks underneath each one of these accounts. You'll see the ASM numbers, the original budget and what has been used up to date about three weeks ago within each of these accounts. So you can see the salary of the director of athletics facilities in school safety and also the benefits underneath with the original budget and the year to date. Next up in payroll is coaches' salaries. You can see that the majority of the budget is within the coaches' salaries. We are nearing $100,000 with it used in that account so far this year. You can also see the athletic secretary's pay and benefits. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Shad, but 25% of their salary is charged to the athletic department. And FICA and retirement costs, about 50.93% of their salary is also charged to athletics. The officials account, it begins with about $30,000 in there about three weeks ago. We're at about $10,000. This account is used for any and all officials that we use for athletic competitions throughout the year. If we do host a, an event through the MHSAA, a state tournament event, we are reimbursed for the officials and several other things through that event. We also have an MHSAA state tournament account. This account is built for team accommodations, food and transportation if a team makes it to the state final. So any travel costs that they have to take care of is used through this state tournament account.
And just a reminder, it's not 100% of the cost. There are some guidelines we have for all of our teams. You know, you have four kids in a room and there's a per dollar amount for a hotel to run it. So it doesn't cover 100%, but it helps offset those costs for those teams that make it to the states.
Yes, I apologize, I should have added that to that slide. We also have a regular season tournament account. This is any and all regular season tournament competitions that athletic teams attend, usually multi-team events that are, most of them are hosted on the weekends for, within this, this account. 335991 is the equipment repair budget items. This is mostly used on the reconditioning of helmets every year. They are stripped down and fixed parts are replaced. If those helmets are damaged, they're taken off, off the line for the safety of the student athletes that are participating in football.
And just a precursor with coming, we will have a purchase order coming. We have to replace quite a few helmets this year. So there's a cost that is beyond the budget here to get the, they no longer need the certification or reconditioning.
The 33551 is probably the account that's used the most within athletics. This account is used for athletic equipment, things like letters, certificates, pins, mat tape, basketballs, baseballs, softballs, the use of outdoor restrooms in the spring by the softball and baseball fields, emergency kit refills, athletic tape, all come out of the athletic equipment budget line.
So one of the questions that came up was, and I already said that too, was there was a fundraiser by one of our teams to ask for-
Everything. Girls' basket.
Girls' basket.
Everything.
And so when I went to Mr. Reiner, I, you know, our conversation was basic equipment that we, for a sport to operate, do we cover it? And I guess, I guess, can you explain that process? If I need a basketball or a volleyball or a football or a baseball, what's the process that the coaches are going through?
At our preseason meeting, the coaches are told that if they have any needs, that they need help with, to come to me and I help them as much as I possibly can. A lot of the coaches know that there is not a lot of money in this athletic equipment account. So most will not ask me, but I help them as much as I can. I also have an internal account that I will pull out of to at least try to supplement and help them with what they are trying to purchase.
Okay, well, then we're not truly, the athletic equipment, $8,000, doesn't come anywhere near what it takes to run athletics.
No.
Okay, so then we have coaches that are having fundraisers asking for basic equipment. So if you're talking balls, uniforms, different stuff. And so parents are out there, they're fundraising and then when the question's asked, well, what does Richmond pay for athletics? The reality is not much. And, but yet the perception is that Richmond, you know, because we're so athletic-minded, everything's athletics, that's really not true. So where, where my question is coming, what I asked Brian and wanted to ask the board, if, if a budget of $8,000, because if you've already spent $6,144 and we haven't even gotten to spring sports yet, I just have a problem with these groups fundraising for uniforms and balls that makes my head want to explode as a parent. You know, that you're trying to raise, and I know, I know it's been happening for a long time, but I just think it's unacceptable. And are you truly, when you, when you say that you're, you sit down with these coaches, so then, then we don't really truly have a picture. You, someone just threw $8,000, and I don't mean that to be flippant, that someone threw $8,000, but we threw $8,000 into that. But in all the sports we have, our athletic department has never sat down in the years that I've been sitting on this board to say, "This is really what it costs to run athletics." So we've always gone with the mentality that we're paying the salaries and officials, you know, but it's way more than that. So that's where I'm coming from, that when you start talking about a budget, I don't know how you run an athletic department when you don't truly know, because you, you're not telling me what, what I want to know is what does it cost for every sport to have basic stuff? And basic stuff to me is all, you know, I mean, a uniform, it just is. That's what I want. This, this doesn't do me any good and I, I'm not being disrespectful, but it, that's not what I'm looking at. And I don't know what anyone else is sitting at this table, but if I'm going to start talking budget and, and truly what it takes, because athletic stuff is just important as academic stuff. I'm a big supporter of both. But if we are truly running an athletic program and we're really not putting enough money in to run it, we're doing a disservice to our coaches, our athletes and our parents.
Along that same lines, a couple of years ago, we line item on the academic side. We did grade level, content area budgets, art budgets, we upped the music budget, over memory, now STEAM, PE. Each, each course had, was given a line item budget. If that's what the board wants us to do in, to get ready for the budget season, we can do that with each sport. Say, okay, let's sit down and go through basketball. What target, what is the minimum for basketball? And what would that cost be that we'd have to budget? What's for volleyball? What's for wrestling? What's for any sport? And that's why, that's-
Because I don't think we know. We don't know what it takes to run these sports. That's, that's where I'm coming from. We continuously, year after year, run an athletic program and fundraisers are happening. And I'm assuming you know what all the fundraisers and what people are fundraising for. You know, we had a wrestling fundraiser there, they did for, to buy a van. Well, where, where, where is that coming in to play? What, that's an extra need. Okay, is it approved by the school district? You've got, you've got the boys' basketball we're talking about, they want to do, redo the floor. Okay, well, where is that a basketball fundraising as opposed to a school district decision that floor needs to be redone? I, I just, I just don't think we're not doing a good job of figuring out. And so from my point, if I, if you're asking me when I'm talking about a budget, what I need to do, I have to have every single sport, every coach needs to sit down with the athletic director and say, "This is what it takes." Because until you do that, like I said, you're at 8,000 and you've spent 6,144 and it's only January. And you had, you had $5,000 for helmets, yet we're going to be over budget. We didn't know that those, those helmets, if we're, because we have to check them every year. And so we know the, the life expectancy of them. So we didn't know going into this year that we had a life expectancy that was going to be bad. So five grand doesn't work.
I agree, I would like to see. Yeah, I think separating the sports is good because yeah, if you have an $8,000 budget and you've already spent $6,000 and it's January, track's not going to get, you know, I mean, spring sports and all those other ones.
Because they do it all themselves. I mean, baseball-
Well, every sport.
And, right, every sport, they do all of their, everything, parents are doling out this money for things that I don't think are extra. I mean, I don't think are basic, should be considered basic. So I, that's, this whole presentation, my whole, I, that's what I wanted to see. And I don't know what anyone else thinks.
I get what you're saying. But I also look at the academic supply line.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, but it's, well, no, don't, I don't want to take this the wrong way. I have a child and a couple of sports and fundraised and all that. But it's easier to fundraise for a sport. Everybody's, you know, it's a team and they're all gone home to, to raise money and to help the team. But it's, it's not that easy to fundraise for a classroom. Even PTA, you know, I did that for 10 years. As much as we thought the money was going, you know, we thought we're going to help the classrooms and the teachers and the supplies. I mean, we did other things, but the money somehow just kind of, you took one for the other. And it didn't actually do extra, is what I want to say, as much as we hoped. But, um, so I think it's easier to fundraise. I mean, not that any of it's right, I wish we had money to not have anybody do fundraisers. But one, fundraisers can be fun and it brings people together and everybody wants to help out. But I wish we had all the money to not have to do any of that for any of it.
Right, and I-
I wish everybody's budget was-
I, I agree with that, but I just think we can do a better job. I think we do a good job where we, you know, Brian does us from the classroom out, you know, what stuff that we need. And we have done, we have moved some things into curriculum money in the last four or five years with that kind of conversation. I'm just saying, if, if you're going to look at it, look at everything and you're right, we can't because we don't have money, a lot of money to do it. But I think we can do a better job and at least have a better idea of what athletics truly costs us.
I think for like the supply line, we just need a real number. Doesn't mean, for athletics, that 8,000 might not change, but what's the real number so we can make a decision? And the supplies, what's the real number so we have it and we'll do the best we can?
Right.
So you want us to go by sport and come up with that number in total so that you have that, see if that will look at the budget? And if we have our allocation and they're able to do it, so that then it's on the table and you might be able to do it.
We might not be able to give them everything they're asking for, but at least try to figure out a way to balance that or give more if possible.
I just want to get to a point where we stop telling parents that we're fundraising for uniforms and balls for basically. That just makes me crazy. I, I don't think we should, that's not how we should be advertising it.
If we're fundraising like I am, like the extra for the fans, for the-
Yeah, that's a-
Like that's a fundraising, we're asked, I agree.
Am I safe to assume that every boardroom here believes the uniform is a basic item?
Yes.
It's hard to play the game without it.
It's, yeah, it's hard to play the game without, or the sport without a uniform.
I ask that because on the academic side, a band uniform is a basic function. So there, the band group is probably going to, if we're able to do it for athletics, we're going to have to figure out a way to do it for-
But again, that's, that's the whole thing when you're putting a budget together and you're talking about that kind of stuff, that's what you bring to us. If, if the, the band uniform is part of the classroom, all that, if that, then you bring that to the table and then we figure it out through your guidance on what we, and maybe it's, it's, it's 30% district funded, 70% fund rate, I don't know. But unless we have a real, true picture of it, how do we know? And we used to do uniforms, sports, it was like a rotation. You didn't, you had to have the same uniform. We have to do a better job of making sure people turn in their uniforms. And if you don't, they have to pay for them, that kind of stuff. But we didn't always get new uniforms back in my day.
Every season.
But you know what I mean? It just, I don't know. I just think we can do a better job.
When we meet tomorrow, we'll set up the target to give a big sport and identify the basic supplies, including uniform, and bring you that number. So when we start the budget process, you'll have, you'll have an idea about that number.
Correct. Thank you.
I'll take the screen. Okay, next we'll move to our presentation, school board recognition, recognition.
Well, this is an exciting time. Every January we get to recognize the individuals sitting up here at the table. I think many people in the listening audience do not, I truly would do not realize the countless hours that go on outside-
countless hours that go on outside of the two meetings a month that this board does. There's just some information that, you know, there are over 4,000 school board members in the state of Michigan, and, you know, I'm lucky to work with seven that are very dedicated, devoted to making sure that the students and staff are their first priority, and ultimately the community of first-class schools. You know, I know each one of them take their jobs very seriously, they take the public trust very seriously, the public has entrusted them millions of dollars, and the decisions that this board makes aren't easy decisions that they have to make, but they're always are making sure that they are fiscally sound and that students are in their first priority. And we talked about the stuff you guys do outside, and I'm preaching to the choir, it's the six and seven with Deb here. You know, the hours attending school functions, preparing for the board meeting, reading all the reports ahead of time, reviewing agenda proposals, deliberating over very difficult decisions, and this board in the last several years has had some very difficult decisions pending them, both in their control and many that are outside of their control. Today, our school board members are faced with very, sometimes overwhelming challenges and charges, but I can safely say that our board is an outstanding board in really putting the current students and our future students in their priority. So for that, I want to thank you for your dedication and your hard work and everything you do for taking this, sometimes a thankless job, no compensation job, it is out of the goodness of your heart that you do this, and we are a better district because of you. In front of you is a basket that was put together by various departments throughout the organization. So on behalf of the students and staff, I want to recognize you and offer this gift basket of appreciation. Just to give you some sense of what's in this basket, donated from Lee Elementary School, there is a kindness jar with a little quote and explanation on it. There is a truly great board member, a truly great board member is hard to find, difficult to part with, and impossible to forget notebook in there, it's a pretty cool notebook, and it also has a Starbucks gift card attached to it. The middle school, there's a gift certificate in there, donated for the middle school Devil's Depot, so please stop in and use your gift card to purchase the middle school apparel, it's in our new school store this year. And then from the high school, there is a thanks latte for all you do for Richmond School, which contains a Starbucks mug, a Starbucks gift card, and some Granada Trail mixes. The athletic department has in their portfolio with a pen. The food service department has a gift certificate to one of our local restaurants. Transportation department has a coffee-to-go tumbler. After I was reading all these, I realized it was kind of a coffee cream, so maybe your late night meetings, I don't know. And then from the board of education, the central office, there's a gift card for lunch, take time to enjoy it on behalf of the central office. And there's also, to support public schools, there is a lottery gift card in there, so hopefully, we are lucky to have great leadership. So hopefully that brings you luck, and we support public schools by donating to Michigan Lottery. So thank you again for all your hard work. In the back is your certificate, I put it all at once, I was figuring, this way everything's protected with the weather. I can't thank you enough because your commitment to the students is what makes us, keeps us focused on what our priorities are, so thank you.
Okay, next we will move to our public comment portion of the meeting. We have three minutes to make a statement, please leave your name and number, and this is not a call for our answer and question, question and answer portion. We will listen to your statement, and if you have any questions, we'll ask the superintendent to give back to you. So at this moment, is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Okay, being no public comment, we will move on to superintendent and legislative.
Okay, some of these legislative updates are from the week we had our last board, and it happened shortly thereafter in last week. So I'll start with the consensus revenue estimating conference was released about a week ago. This conference is these fiscal agencies of the House and Senate, as well as the Department of Treasury, that come together and they agree upon, these are the numbers we're going to use to prepare next year's budget. Revenue from last year and this year continues to be much higher than expected, even before, when you take into consideration all the influx of federal dollars that the state received. This gives the state a larger balance to go forward for both the school aid fund and general fund. This is the second year in a row that the projected revenue has been significantly higher than what they budgeted for. For instance, this year's school aid fund is expected to leave $3.6 billion left on the balance sheets of unallocated dollars. That means even before they started this year's budget projections, there's already $3.6 billion that has been allocated to schools. The projected revenue in the school aid fund is going to be approximately $17 billion, that is $819 million over this past previous years. Basically what that means is in a very simplistic form, there is plenty of dollars to allocate per pupil dollars to school districts, even after the state, for many districts, made it whole. I don't want to say whole, because we've been so long not being whole, bringing us all up to the $8,700 threshold and get towards the targeted number of what the school financial reform reports and all that have said, what it costs to educate students. So hopefully, those monies will be earmarked for schools. Just as a separate note, the general fund also has a very large surplus of almost $621 million increase, so there's a lot of dollars out there. This Wednesday, the 26th, the governor will release her, finalize her budget in her state and state address, and then in early February, that will be released. So we're looking forward to choosing the starting point of where she believes the per pupil allocation will be, and then we go through the budgetary process. Another news, the Supreme Court, if you haven't heard, reported that the mandated vaccination and test re-requirements was considered, that OSHA did not have the authority, so we do not have to do that at this, at break, we do not have to do that for our district. Next month at the February meeting, we have several presentations planned, and one of them is a requirement that was put in place this year when they approved the state aid budget. It's the new benchmark assessment reports, this first deadline is in February. Michigan School Code Law states that the school district shall present certain assessment information not later than the first board meeting, first meeting of the board that occurs in February, so this hour will be here on February 14th to talk about our student benchmark assessment results for both in-person and virtual students. Though because we're in many cases below the number 10.
Third.
Third, excuse me, we'll be talking globally and not necessarily specific grade levels, because it would potentially identify students. So Ms. Arrow will be here to, number one, make sure we're in compliance with this law, but also to provide the board an update on our proficiency. Last week, it was pretty quiet at Lansing. Due to the high number of COVID cases, the House canceled many sessions and committee meetings, but it's expected to return to normal this week. The Senate also had a quiet week last week, there was just a handful of committee meetings that happened. One of them was, there was a Senate committee heard testimony on House Bill 4074. This bill encourages school districts to include the instruction in free enterprise and entrepreneurships in the high school social studies curriculum, so they're basically identifying something that we now would be teaching, passing. This bill was passed by the House last May, 95 to 13 was the vote. It's expected to get a vote at the Senate Committee this week, so we'll be watching this. The effective date was, would be for next school year. The Michigan Association of School Boards, as well as other statewide organizations, have been continuously talking to the Michigan Department of Legislature, or to the Michigan Department of Education and legislators about the need for flexibility around seat time and attendance requirements for this year. Last week, we had a lot of flexibility due to COVID and exposures and quarantine, all of our pupil accounting rules went back to pre-pandemic rules. So Senate Bill 664 talks about giving greater flexibility about counting students, especially when we had to quarantine students because of COVID-19 exposure, but it's stalled out in the House, the House isn't really moving the bill forward. Anything under 75% daily attendance, under current rules, we cannot count as a day of instruction. We have been above 75%, but if you have an outbreak, we dealt with two schools threats that any families stayed home, as we were dealing with those in December, and just inclement weather would put us at risk. Currently, we have six days, Elska has six, we have used three of them to date. Once we go beyond the six, there is a possibility we may have to start making up days. And I say may, because there are some exceptions that we would apply for, but just as a black and white, we would have to make them up, view of it. As I said, Wednesday is the state and state address, I'm really looking forward to looking what the governor's intent is in her budget regarding schools, based on what the consensus revenue conference stated last, almost two weeks ago now. The health department last week changed the health department protocols, and they sent a letter out to families on Thursday. Basically, the protocols have changed, what hasn't changed is if your child is sick, please stay home. That has not changed in this whole process. But what has changed is we no longer are required to contact trace, we are reporting only positive cases to the health department, we are notifying families if there is a positive student in the class that their students attend. So for instance, I get, I'm part of the email change, as well as the notice to the health department, it's done by classroom. So countywide, all the superintendents came together, the letter was consistent, was supposed to be sent out by all 21 school districts, including the MISD last week, by Friday morning at the latest, and the process of how we're notifying families is supposed to be consistent with each district. There were several superintendents that were part of a subcommittee that put that together, utilizing Power School. That change has saved our, is saving our principals and administrators hours and hours of work that now they can be redirected to the conversations we had here tonight about, you know, watching and monitoring kids that may be falling behind, and what do we do to respond to them? So I just encourage parents to read that, again, if your child is not feeling well, please err on the side of caution and keep home. We're trying to stay in person with our staff, and that does become a little more challenging when we, when kids are coming sick and getting other kids sick for staff. Food service spotlight, in December, with only 15 meal days, we served 17,171 meals just in the month of December, and to date, so far, our reimbursements with the number of students is well over $282,000 that we've received because of the number of students. So I want to thank Kathy, our food service director, the head cooks and cooks, they do an outstanding job, but don't come talk to them on pizza day, because that is a big day at our school. So it is, with having free breakfast and lunch, we have a lot more students taking advantage of it, which is our meal count, and they have just done an outstanding job, so I can't thank them enough. Transportation, when we were closed the last two days in January because of staffing issues, our custodians stepped up to help clean our buildings. I asked them to come in on those snow days and help with our buildings, to get them ready and sanitized, because we didn't have the custodians. They sanitize various areas, they mop floors, they empty garbage, they went through, they got classrooms emptied. Megan Galvin, Linda Grillo, Timothy Lizzie, David Count, Megan Schible, really all helped us out in the district's time of need, you know, their efforts speak volumes, amount of the culture that exists in Richmond, but also in the transportation, so I can't thank them enough for coming in and helping in an area that isn't their background, it's not their, what they signed up for. The website should be up to date, thank you for bringing that to my attention last week. There are three tabs now on the website, when you click on calendar, one is the district calendar, so when you click on it, it has three years of negotiated calendar. The second is district facility use, which would be anybody who's using our building, you can see a calendar, and it's color-coded by, you know, level, you know, when like parentage conferences, or maybe it's a Title I meeting that they're having, et cetera. And then the third one is the athletic calendar. We keep the athletic and the non-athletic calendars on separate, just because of the number of activities that are on the athletic calendar separate, that has been updated. Mrs. Walla, a middle school math teacher, wrote and submitted a grant to the home schools government credit union, received $750 for a math grant, so congratulations to her, well deserving, she will make those dollars go as long, as far as they can, and she's just outstanding, so congratulations to her for taking that initiative. A couple of building announcements, at Lee Elementary School, this coming Friday, there's a GSRP, we'll be holding a parent meeting, it's a virtual parent meeting, one parent from each of the rooms that attends will be winning, there's a prize that they're auctioning or raffling off for those that attend. During the meeting, the focus is going to be shared on information about literacy and writing with your preschool students. On Monday, the least teachers did a data dig, and they are using the data that they did, found out about their school, their students for future planning. This past Saturday was the Mom Problem, sponsored by the PTO. I did not go, it's for moms, but based on the social media post, it looked like everybody had a great time, a lot of happy moms out there. And Lee is beginning, so multiple, some initiatives focused on improving attendance. One of the things that the administrators, particularly Ms. Arrow, did is she did a attendance dig from September through December.
Yep.
And if you add up the number of minutes, let me see if I do this from memory, for every student that is absent, they miss roughly seven hours of instruction, six and a half hours of instruction.
320 minutes of instructional.
320 minutes of instructional minutes per day. I'm just curious on the board, how many total minutes so far from September, October, November, December, have we lost in instruction because of absences? You don't want to take a guess, minutes are talking. So 320 minutes a day for every student.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Three hundred.
He's only asking because it's way less than that.
You think so?
Oh, three thousand.
You think that's what he's going for? Okay.
Maybe. 4.2 million lost instructional missed.
So it's way more.
That our students have lost because of absences. Now, we're also telling students, if you're not feeling well, be watching home, so I don't want kids to say, I got to come to school and I'm sick, but it's something that we are looking at, and we're looking at, is there these chronic absences, are these singleton absences? Do you remember I told you how many student absences is total?
It was over 13,000.
Since September, October, November. So when we're looking at student data, and we're looking at why kids are behind, this is part of our reason, if they're not in school, they're missing instruction. So again, I'm not, we're not pointing fingers at it, but it's just another piece of data that we are looking at and seeing. So all of our schools have started an initiative to try to incentivize getting kids here who really should be here, who maybe somehow are convincing mom and dad that they should be home, and they're not sick. And all, I was guilty of that as a kid too, I probably did that to my mother one too many times, but that's the goal. One of the things that we found is, at the elementary level, kindergarten has the highest absentee rate. And if you think about it, in a five-year-old, you're establishing that process, that thought, that mentality, that if we don't change it, it's going to become problematic each grade after that. So, you know, Ms. Arrow spent the weekend and last week doing this data dig, and it's been pretty interesting and from our administrators looking at. So you'll see on Facebook, some initiatives, for some, these are the kids that might have been had perfect attendance this week, or had a few as absences, et cetera. At the middle school, they focused on, one of their professional developments this past Monday was on standards and proficiencies, again, getting to that common language. In all the buildings, NWA's testing is finalizing, they're more focusing on makeup tests right now, I believe the next Tuesday, is it?
Yes.
The final NWA day, so that data can be pulled to do for our February board meeting that we have to report. At the middle school, classroom spelling bees have started, and the school championship is this Wednesday, as well as midterm exams for those high school courses, and the high school classes begin this Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday with half-day. And the high school classes begin this Wednesday, Thursday and Friday with half days. Uh, the snowball basketball game and, and snow court will be on Friday, January 28th. Uh, and the snow coming dance will be on Saturday, the 29th. The dance will be held at the middle school, not at the high school. Um, and again, the high school's also wrapping up NWA. So there was a lot there, but that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Next up, the items of interest from the board of education. I'll start down here, Mr. Simmons.
I'd just like to thank anyone that contributed to our thoughtful baskets. Uh, it is appreciated. So thank you.
Mrs. Simmons or Mrs. Simmons?
I have it.
Um, yeah, I'd just like to say thanks as well to everybody who contributed. Um, definitely some very useful things in there. Thank you. Down there, Mrs. Zubi.
I'd also like to thank everyone on the departments that contributed to our baskets. Appreciate it.
So Mrs. Salto?
Just want to take a moment to remember Janet Higgins. She was a longtime special ed director who passed away last week. Um, she was an amazing person in our district and the work that she did. And she was a really, really good human being too. I've known her a long time. So just to remember her and the work that she did for us.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Shulman. Um, first I would like to say thank you to the individuals that came in and cleaned the school. That's huge and is much appreciated. And thank you for the generosity for everybody that put toward these baskets. It's very kind.
Thank you. I too would like to thank everybody for our wonderful baskets and recognizing us. Um, we appreciate it.
That being said, next we need to move to our action items. Approval of board resolution for student discipline hearing. Do I have a motion?
I motion that following a closed session, student discipline hearing, the board votes to suspend, is that how I would say it? Yes. Suspend student 012422-A, consistent with the attached resolution.
Do I support? Support. All those in favor? I mind you to oppose? No. Motion carries. Next up, the approval of increase to adult breakfast and lunch prices. Can I get a motion?
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve an increase in price for adult breakfast meals from $2.65 to $3 and adult lunch meals from $4.85 to $5.25, effective January 25th, 2022, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support? Any discussion?
I do have the director food service, there are any questions regarding it. Someone required it and we don't have a whole lot of options unless we want to possibly give up some federal funding. By that apply.
Is it, do we, do we do this? When was the last time we did this? And do they require it every year to do? I can't remember.
Uh, no, it's not required every year.
Okay.
It's required this year because there was an increase in our reimbursement amount. Um, and if you add taxes in with that, the adult meals will.
So just randomly they'll come and say that we have to do this is what it is?
Yeah, and we'll have a cushion with the, we're going a little above what the limits are right now.
Okay.
So we'll have a cushion and then when we do the calculation, usually it's done once a year and as long as we don't need to, you know, at least they know where we're at. So it's done, we look at it every year, this year twice a year because of the program that we're in.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
I have it.
I? Motion passes. At this time, I'd like to call to adjournment on the meeting, for the board of education meeting.